We have the time at 6:00 PM. Will you please join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're having a special meeting for the purpose of the township and entities, the other three entities in Valley View School District, to meet on the JED. Mr. Easton, will you call the rule, please?
Mr. Raymert?
Here.
This is Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs? Mr. Stubbs is absent. We do have a quorum. And also, let us note that here at the head table, we also have Mrs. Sewell, Mr. Wasseig from Germantown, Mr. Moyer from Jackson Township, and Brenda Waimer with our attorneys. And online is Mr. Lamb from Farmersville.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. So this evening, I'll start going through the items I had noted from our last meeting. Feel free to chime in if there's anything different. I think the last time we met was 6:17. And what we were leaving a little bit of additional time in between meetings was to make sure that we could get the preliminary JED contract reviewed by the prosecutors. So I guess, Brenda, let's start there. Have you gotten a response back from all the councils?
So I heard from Mr. Schiff before the last version. I heard from the prosecutor's office after the last version. I don't believe I've heard anything from Farmersville.
Okay.
And I thought at the last meeting, they said their attorney had looked at it and had comments, but I haven't received them from anybody.
Okay. Nick, I see that you're on one. Can you hear?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Our council was fine with how it's written. And if you'd like, I can have her just send an email to confirm that.
That would be good. I just add it to the file as prosecutor's email so that we know that everybody has had it reviewed and looked at.
Okay, no problem.
So that'll be it. Then we've got Jackson and Germantown Township, and then we've got you guys having Mr. Schiff review it. So we're doing everybody's review, except for getting confirmation from Farmersville. Okay. I think you also still have an issue with the property descriptions.
Right, there are those three parcels that Haley noted that we don't actually have, legal descriptions don't actually include three of the parcels. They match up to the other parcel numbers listed, but the legals for those three are missing, and they're still.
Okay. And on this one, Haley, the best thing for us to do is reach out to the school board. Are you thinking?
Yeah, so typically, the descriptions are available online, but sometimes with properties that are owned by the same person for so long, or same entity for so long, it's not listed just because it's not in their workflow to go back and put it online. So my advice would be to go to the Board of Education and ask them for the descriptions of their property.
Or you mean?
Or those parcels.
Yeah. I guess we could also couldn't reach out to the county, even though they don't have it listed. They probably have a description there.
Correct. Yeah, it should be in their records, but it's nowhere that I can access, unfortunately, at this time.
Yes, on that one, it might be easier even starting at the county, because I have a feeling it's going to be a little bit tough with the school board for them to dig back through and try to find this one. So I'll take this. If you can give me the contact that you work with at the county, and I'll take this one just to send a note. And you also had noted the three parcels, right? So can you send that to me as well?
Correct, yes.
If you can send me the three parcel numbers, and then I'll reach out to the county, and I'll try to get that for you, Brenda. I think those were the open items that I had as far as the contract or the parcels that.
That I have.
I know that you had sent out the, until like 20th, you'd sent out all the draft changes that we had from last meeting. I didn't notice anything in that that wasn't enrolled from the discussion points we had. I guess I'll pause here and see if everyone else had a chance to review it, make sure all your changes were included.
Yes, I was good with that change.
Okay. Nick, have you had a chance to review it, or see anything else that needed to be changed in the draft contract as we discussed last meeting?
No, I did read through it, and it seemed to reflect what we discussed, so I'm good with it.
Okay. I guess the last piece is then, you know, the next step we would have is moving forward to the school board to get them to petition in or out. I know we had talked about you guys showing up potentially on a board meeting for the school. I know you'd sent something to them. You said you were going to put together a one pager or something. You had sent that over.
Yeah.
I think last meeting, you had noted that there was a preliminary response, that there wasn't a lot of question or anything. But at this point, do we need to go sit in front of the school board on a meeting and have a discussion, answer some questions? I mean, what do we want to do on this approach?
So we had told Mr. Richards, I think, I'd have to go back in my email. I think it was, we recommended they present that at the August, at their August meeting, petition to join. So we probably want to check with him and see if he wants any of this there, just to answer any questions or go over anything. Aside from that, I mean, I think we wanted to get the document out posted, or they actually...
Right, we wanted to get finalized and give them an actual copy of the agreement with the petition.
Right, right.
So they don't have any of that draft information yet?
They have the draft petition, but I don't believe they've seen a draft of the contract.
Okay. And their August meeting will be when?
The same day as ours, isn't it?
Right.
I think they'll be the...
Nine. So we've got roughly, you know, 10 days, somewhere around there of that. Okay. I think, I don't know what the... Go ahead, Nick.
Tyler, I think it'd be beneficial, just based on some conversations I've had, to definitely have a representative from the, this JED group at the meeting. One, to proactively just kind of walk the board through the JED, not, you know, line by line by any means, but just an overview of what it is, what it includes, what it will mean for, you know, them ultimately, the tenant, and then, you know, reactively answer any questions they have.
I agree with that. I'm trying to think of what the right approach is on the contract. If we just go ahead and get that sent over now, I think that should tend, they should be enough for them to at least pre-read it and maybe formulate some questions.
Sure.
And then have at least, you know, someone from this team go and, unfortunately, Brenda can't be there, so, you know, if the questions come, to be a little more legal on nature, we might have to defer, but at least we can go and collect some of those questions and have a follow-up after that. Unfortunately, as noted, it's going to be on the same night of the Germantown Township trustee meeting, and so that precludes the three of us from attending.
They do start their meeting at 6:00 PM.
Earlier.
So if you were first on the agenda.
Okay. That's fair. So I guess, Brian, since you can touch with superintendent, do you mind to reach out to him? And I guess first, let's get them the draft contract as it seems now, along with working up this draft.
Well, yeah, make sure they know that the legal descriptions are not final yet, but...
And then, while, ask him to, I mean, sometimes I notice we have to be very explicit to disseminate that to all the board members, so they have time to review it ahead of that meeting. And I prefer if you could ask him to be first on the agenda, because I would like to attend, and obviously, I think you would. So whoever else can attend is obviously more welcome to a public meeting, but if we can do it at 6:00 PM, I would try to go to that and stuck out to get over here on time.
I'll be able to attend, too, if it's at 6:00 PM, but we're in the same boat. Our council meeting starts at 7:00, the same night.
Okay. So I guess let's make that a...
Should we approve this contract before we take it to the school board?
No, you can't.
I can't?
You can't approve the contract until after you have a public hearing. I mean, you can informally say, you know, we support it, or, but you can't actually pass the resolution that approves the contract until after you have a public hearing, which you have to notice 30 days prior to the public hearing, and you have to have all the documents finalized and ready when you notice the public hearing, so that anybody can come to any of the entities and look at a complete copy with all exhibits, and the maps, where the dead and bylaws and all the exhibits. So that's what we're trying to get. The petitions don't actually have to be signed before the public hearing is scheduled or before the public hearing is held, but usually what happens is after the public hearing is scheduled, before it's actually held, we try to get all the petitions signed during that intervening period. But we haven't scheduled the public hearing yet because we're still trying to get those legal descriptions finalized. So you can't take any sort of official approving action of the contract itself until after the public hearing. You can make a motion to support it, make a motion to move forward with the public hearing, but those actual resolutions to approve the contract by any of the four entities can't occur until after the public hearing.
And in addition, I think it was our intent at one of the previous meetings, that it would be beneficial, just talk this out with the school board, since they are the tenant, make sure that they're all good with it. And if they suggest any changes, we might as well talk about that before we even go to a public meeting anyways. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but that was kind of my understanding.
No, that's not a bad idea, because then you'd be starting over, I mean, start the process and have to pull back.
Yes, as I say, I remember you saying we could do that in parallel, that last piece with the petition, but I agree with Nick. I think it's better to make sure that we are squared away before we go to the public with it. Okay. I don't have any other items. I mean, it sounds like we need to have the meeting with the school board and then come back and give you a follow-up from if there was any questions that we need answered, and then we can meet back as a group again. But I think we can meet, you know, pretty quickly in August, to turn around here in a couple of weeks, if you guys are okay with that, because that'll keep us on track if there's questions and moving forward. Any other thoughts?
So those of us that are here, are we, I mean, it's been a year and a half process, and we've looked at this forwards and backwards. Are we all comfortable with the document that we've got as far as supporting, we're not voting on anything, but are we comfortable supporting this?
I think we've had discussions around the same topics many times, and I think people spoke, and I now sit back and remember, I didn't ask if there was any public comment tonight, so I guess I'll get to that in just a moment, because I want to exclude you guys from having the opportunity to speak. And I know we have more visitors tonight than we generally have in person. So we'll ask for that, but there's been people come up here and speak, and I think it's the same things we've discussed about, you know, do we have the right structure around what we're going to do with the funds? I think we came to an equitable split between the entities, but do we feel like we're utilizing the funds for the right purpose for the JED? And I think that's the one thing that I still struggle with to some degree. I know we've talked about this ad nauseam, but that's where I would say I'm not fully standing. I'm confident that I feel 100% supportive of it, but I've said the same thing, I think, consistently, since it began, that I've had a little bit consternation around that. Apart from that, I feel like all the other terms in the document are pretty straightforward, and that we've, you know, worked through those details and been amicable and dealt with them appropriately. I think it's still the contribution piece that I'm a little bit concerned about as far as what goes on with economic development long-term. It's my part, and I'll hold there if anybody else has comments.
I'm comfortable with the document.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Nick.
You go ahead.
I said, I'm comfortable with the document. I think we've talked and talked about this, and it seems to have a pretty equitable split amongst the four entities, and I know that was a huge discussion, I will say, for quite a while, and so I'm happy with where we are now. I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I'll say that I'm in a similar boat as Tyler. I do want to make sure that, you know, because it is a 99-year contract, that we're, you know, doing the right thing for not just the communities, but the property and the tenant itself. And, you know, I'll just be the first to admit, I've learned a lot through this process, not only about JEDs, but about some different opportunities at the school, at the property, at the new school property. And I think, you know, if we can put them in a good position to attract some, you know, additional tenants, that would be something I would be for. But as the contract is written, I do feel comfortable with, you know, everything in it. I would be very interested to hear what the school board has to say, since they are the tenant, about kind of their place in this whole deal.
Yes, that's where I agree, and that's kind of where I've, you know, went with this, is that although I struggle a little bit with how I feel about the contribution, I feel like they're the ones that should be most vested in that. Obviously, I'm representing the township, and I have no strong feeling necessarily from the township perspective on that one specifically, but just the overall structure of the JED from the ORC, and I feel like the school board and the superintendent should absolutely be the ones to weigh in from their perspective on that, as they're the tenant that would have to opt into this. So I think that's the right next step, and I want to hear, you know, what their thoughts are on it.
So we've talked over and over about the disbalance between the contribution. I spent some time in the past month looking at, because we always go back to the local JEDs, right? Austin Landing.
Yeah.
We've got Austin Landing, we've got Dayton Mall, the airport, Wright Brothers Airport, I don't know what it's, it's not called that, but looking back at Austin Landing, I just looked at their 2019 financials. They spent $0 on economic development in that JED. They dispersed $800,000. They collected 1.6 million. So it's not, the impression is, all of this money should always go towards economic development. That's not how any of these JEDs work. They don't always do that. If you even took a small percentage of the total revenue, you know, when we were thinking 140, 142, something, who's going to generate overall? I think each entity would be more than happy to contribute some percentage towards economic development. But this JED is the framework. This gets us, that framework, to be able to share, to be able to jointly come together, and if somebody wants to put something out there, then we've got the framework already. Each of us can contribute to the JED. And, and we've talked about this before, but this area out here, rightly so, is a concern with unelected or controlling anything. Given the history, I understand that. We intentionally placed a $4,000 cap on what this JED can borrow or spend, no matter what. Given that, the remaining money is dispersed back to each entity, has checks and balances is accountable to elected officials. So if the JED board ever wants to spend money, more than $4,000, they come to each of us. We've got revenue generated from the JED. We can easily provide it. We've got the framework set up, and the accountability, the oversight's there, and it's very limited. They're not going to be able to go out and take loans like the Water District. They're not going to be able to go out and spend a lot of money without any oversight, because they've got to come back to all of us. So given that, I think if you look at it as a framework, or anything, any project, JED board comes to us, I think every one of us are going to, it is in our best interest to grow that, to grow the tax base out there. So anything we can do to support the school, anything we can do to support a new business out there, every one of us should be interested in that. And when I think we look at it through that lens, and still look at some of those JEDs over mine in township, because it's unbelievable, will make me feel a lot better.
Yeah, no, and I think your main point here is very valid, that there's a structure in place that can enable what we all want to have happen. So I agree with that. I think what I would say is, if that's the purpose of this, is to create that structure and enable it, why not pre-fund it for that exact purpose? You know, that's where I've always kind of petered on this one. I guess the thing, to your point on the JED, I haven't looked at the budget. I guess what I would say is, if they collected 1.6 and spent 800,000, I would assume that some of that 800,000 was spent for the benefit of economic development in that district. And we've talked about how broad and interpretive economic development is, but my understanding of that Austin JED is that they do provide services to those tenants. What it is, I'm not sure exactly, but I'm sure it's maintenance and...
It's done some landscaping. I think the year before, they spent $30,000 on landscaping.
Yeah.
But the 800,000 goes directly to the entities that are part of the JED.
Oh, that's what you're saying, is the split?
Yeah.
Okay. So I agree, and I think that's where I'm at with it, is that, you know, I feel like pre-funding it for that purpose makes a lot of sense, but then I also understand people saying about the non-productive money sitting there, but I think it'll be easier to approve something from the township and municipality perspective, if there's already money sitting in account for that purpose versus calling it back from the entity.
Right.
Which is why I feel strongly about that one. But is there any other thoughts? And I want you guys to speak before we open it up to the public comments, but I do need to open up the public comments and allow them to have an opportunity as well. So at this point, I guess, if you guys have any public comments, please come to the podium, please state your name and address, and ask that you try to limit your comments, if possible, to five minutes.
Yeah, so, comments for?
Mark Cross, 7444 Sastiver Road, Germantown, Ohio. First, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak. I would also like to thank Mr. Easton for hand-delivering me a copy of the Valley View Joint Economic Development District contract after a public records request. After reviewing the contract, I believe that the concerns about the proposed JED that I raised at the 5-5-21 and 6-17 meetings are valid, and more pressing is the board considers its next step. As stated previously, the entities represented here in written and spoken word have stated, "The purpose of the JED is to ensure Germantown and Farmersville do not lose a significant portion of current tax revenue when the schools relocate to Germantown Township." This purpose is not supported by the draft document, and I'll be referring to the draft document in here, if you want to follow along. On page one, under recital B, it states, "Germantown, German, Jackson, and Farmersville have determined that the allocation and distribution of any income tax revenues provided for herein is intended to be in accordance with the services provided to and within the JED." As stated on page two, section three, "Purpose," Germantown, German, Jackson, and Farmersville intend that the creation and operation of the district shall, and it is the purpose of the district, facilitate economic development. No mention of making the entities whole. Referring to the draft, I question the contribution each entity is making to the JED. On page three, section seven, "Contributions to the District," states, "In accordance with section 715.72F of the Revised Code, the contracting parties each agree to provide services and improvements to the district to facilitate economic development in the district. The amounts stated on page four to pay initial legal, administrative, and other costs fulfill any conditions stated in ORC 715.72F." Again, referring to the draft, from section eight through section 10, the JED Board of Directors establishment and duties are covered extensively. Exhibit B from pages B1 through B9, titled "Bylaws Govering Valley View Joint Economic Development District," again deals extensively with the establishment and duties of the board. On page seven, fourth paragraph, states, "The board is authorized to take such necessary and appropriate action or establish such programs to facilitate economic development in the district in accordance with the purpose of this contract." Page 10, first full paragraph, states, "Income tax revenues are to be used by the district and the contracting parties to encourage and promote economic development in the district, including but not limited to maintaining and improving infrastructure facilities of the district and the contracting parties, providing safety and health services within the district and within the contracting parties, and generally improving the environment for those working in the district and for those working and residing in the contracting parties." So once the JED board is formed and functioning, the contract states, "The board is to use the generalized income tax funds within the district, not to make any of the entities whole." Even more troubling, and this goes back to what you said before, this established JED board will have exclusive power to spend tax money from Valley View staff, teachers, and administrators with virtually no oversight. As stated by Mr. Keener during his presentation to the Valley View School Board last month, this is reminiscent of the very unpopular Valley View Water and Sewer Board. This is what the citizens want. I would think that the residents within the Valley View School District would be concerned with the page two, section six, titled "Term," that states, "The initial term of this contract shall terminate on December 31, 2031, approximately 10 years. This contract shall automatically extend for nine renewal terms, and they're each 10 years. Is it fair to tax workers in the JED almost indefinitely without an end date in sight?" And again, in contrast to how the draft contract states how the income tax revenue is to be used versus making the entities whole, I refer to exhibit D, "Economic Development Plan", page D2, paragraph one, "Values and Goals for the Future." It states, "A priority of the JED upon formation will be to generate financial resources necessary to provide governmental services and public infrastructure in support of the new school facilities and related development. The JED will distribute income tax revenues equitably to preserve and provide needed infrastructure and community services to support the school district and other businesses within the JED." Schedule A on page D4 does an excellent job expanding upon this goal of using the JED funds for improvements of the JED property. So again, if the NVs are going to form a joint economic development district, the income tax funds generated by taxing the employees working in the JED property should follow the contract. The funds generated should go directly to improve the Valley View School District and the JED property. But another way, if you approve this contract as written and use the income tax revenue to reimburse Germantown, Farmersville for lost revenue instead of the contract's stated purpose, how can the contract be considered valid and not in danger of being contested in court? Even if the approval of the contract is brought to a vote of the residents within the Valley View School District, you still have a flawed contract. Or there are alternatives to this contract. You could change the contract to reflect the advertised purpose of the JED, making the entities whole, but it would not follow the ORC. You could throw all the entire JED contract out and explore whether Germantown could just annex the JED property and work out a revenue sharing agreement with the other entities. Again, probably not legal according to the ORC, because I think the properties have to be contiguous, don't they?
Renegation.
Renegation. Yes, okay. Or you could form the JED and dedicate most of the funds generated for the benefit of the school and the Valley View community. My recommendation would be to help fund the Performing Arts Center that could be used for band concerts, choral concerts, and the wildly popular yearly musical performances. The center could also be rented out and generate income to the schools. So before you, as a 42-page document to approve or change, you were elected to serve your constituents and make tough choices. I, along with a few other people knowledgeable of this issue, hope you make the right choice. And again, you can see how many people are here, you know? If you want to do this, you can do it, but according, after reading the contract, if you go with this contract, you're not following what you initially said, you know? We want to use the JED to make our entities whole. There's nothing in the contract that says that. It all revolves around improving that JED property. So how can, you know, how can, how can you justify the contract, is basically kind of what I'm saying here.
Yeah, so... I'm happy to respond. I just let you finish. Is there any other question to you?
No, I don't have any other questions.
No, I mean, I appreciate you showing up to every meeting, taking diligent notes and paying attention, and what I would say is, you've also mentioned these things quite a few times here lately, and I think it would be consistent that early on, there was a different discussion, because once, once the discussion around the ORC centered around what was really needed with the economic development, that's where the entire discussion centered, in my opinion. I would think, I mean, all these videos are taped, and over the last probably five meetings have been centered around what's the economic development, what is truly the plan, and how is this justified? There's been no talk of revenue sharing based on lost revenues in anything, since we've had a robust discussion about the ORC. So while I totally understand the concern, I'm obviously let you respond, I think it's a little bit biased in the way you're representing it, that this is just strictly a money grab, because that's exactly what we're sitting here and talking tonight about, what's truly the right thing to do, either pre-fund it, or have the structure set up to where we can fund economic development, because at the end of the day, if anyone wanted to join the JED district, we would have the opportunity for the JED board to evaluate what we can do to support that, and so that's what the contract is there for.
I think the big difference is, we didn't have the contract, or I didn't have that contract to look at until the last meeting, you know? So that's the big difference.
Yeah, that's fair. I guess what I'm pointing out, though, is that it seems like one of your key points is that this was strictly just to reimburse people losing money, or Germantown Township was not losing any money. We actually will have the school in Germantown Township, and will incur more expenses to support that school, and so that's part of what this JED is about, and that's what we've talked with Brenda ad nauseam about, is this legally justifiable? We've had all the prosecutors review this, all the legal councils, and I think we've done the due diligence on that side, and I still think there's good discussions that we can continue to have. I think, as we talked tonight, the school board needs to determine if this is right for them to petition in, which I think is one of your key points, and I think it's very valid, Mark. But I guess what I would say is, I think it's unfair to paint it in a light of just a strictly a take and separate.
Well, but that was on the record early on, and, you know, that, we have the fact sheet that was distributed to, basically, assigned by all four entities that represented...
Years ago, whenever that...
Well, it wasn't years ago, it was...
It was over two years ago, I believe.
It was, it was April, I think April of '20, so it's, you know, it's been a little over a year. So plus, again, we, during a regular trustee meeting here, that was stated again, you know, that this is... So, plus, again, we, during a regular trustee meeting here, that was stated again, you know, that this is, this is why it's here.
And that's why the discussion, we had the discussion around that, though, right, that that was not what the JED was for?
Well, exactly, and that's what I'm saying, the contract as written, it is not, it doesn't have any, doesn't say anything about that. And that, you know, if, if you're going to go by this contract, then you use that money to help the JED property and help the school district.
Support the JED property and provide economic development as.
Right, exactly, and that's what, what it says in the, the economic development part of it. But I, I think, again, that if you, you want to file this JED, then you, you know, you, if you want to, you know, not change this contract, that, you know, that is, the goal is to help the Valley View community.
Absolutely.
To me, because if it gets back that, well, and this was just a money grab, you know.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what we said from day one, before you were here, you know, when Matt Burns, that's the first time we met you at the, at the meeting in February of twenty. You know, so, so it's, it's a concern, like I say, especially when you try to present this to the school board. And, you know, they may say, what's, what's in, and we talked, you've talked about this before, and I appreciate that. What's in it for us, you know, why should we, why should we sign that petition if we're not going to get any benefit out of it? And right now, I'm not sure, you know, that, that there is.
And I appreciate that, and what I would encourage is, just as you've done so far, the next steps are go to the school board, and with the discussion there, you're, you're obviously welcome to join. I'd encourage you, if you want to stay, I mean, Mr. Keener's gone and spoken, then we will have the thirty-day notice for the public hearing that we hopefully will have more, you know, interaction from the community at that point in time, and obviously I encourage you to speak.
Unfortunately, you can see the community.
Yeah.
It's, it's an issue, you know, you guys, you guys, you know, it's, it's, it's your decision, because you just don't see, unfortunately, many people interested in it. And that's, that's why it's important to think it through, and you have done that somewhat, you know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so that I'm just, just my, my, my biggest concern, again, I had not read the, the contract until, till I got the draft copy, and what it says in the contract is nothing to do with what was originally proposed at the JED, you know, and that's, that was out there in public, so, oh, yeah.
Understood, and we're not whole, so.
Pardon?
I mean, we are not being made whole, so even that's not.
Well, exactly.
We're actually involved.
So why not spend the money on the school property? I mean, it's not too, too late to, to think about, you know, a performing arts center would be a wonderful way. You know, you could put, you could put ten, ten years of those proceeds, it's well over a million dollars, you know, so, just something to think about.
Absolutely, I, I think that that's part of this contribution piece, and I think we need to see what the school stands on it, because obviously for them to petition in, they should see benefit.
They should see benefit, exactly, so, all right, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
Anyone online?
Is there anyone online? Haley will unmute the lines now. Okay, with that, I'll, I'll review the next steps that I have jotted down, you guys straighten me up if there's anything else. So I've got, Nick, you will send over, or get your legal representative, I guess, to, to send over confirmation that they're aligned to the draft contract that is currently drafted. Nick, can you confirm that?
Tyler, you, you were, you were muted for a little while, so I did not hear that.
Okay, I'm sorry. What I said was, just one of the takeaways from tonight is that you'll have your legal representative confirm with Brenda that she's aligned to the draft contract as it's written?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then Brian, you're going to send the draft contract and the petitions, the draft petitions over to the school superintendent and ask that we distribute it to the board, and ask that we get on the agenda for the August meeting, preferably at six P M., because we have, you know, a lot of representatives going to a seven P M. meeting. Okay, those are the two things I have for tonight. Is there anything else that we need as a takeaway? Oh, I have a takeaway for myself. I need to reach out to the county, and I guess preceding that, will you, Haley, provide me the parcel numbers and the contact? And I will reach out to the county and get the legal descriptions on those three parcels.
Mike, you're too quiet. Are you good?
I'm still thinking about it. I'm thinking that Mr. Cross brought up, you know, the way it was split, who gets how much? But it was like that split between the four came out of a hundred percent. There wasn't any money set back specifically for the JED. Has that changed?
And that's the way it's structured, and that's what we've been talking about tonight, is do we.
The money from JED gets taken off the top, and then the split is of the remainder.
But the money that is taken off the top is just for the operation of the JED.
Right, it's just a nominal amount.
Right, it does, it doesn't include any money for the JED for improvements. I think is what Mr. Cross was trying to bring across.
But what's that money in terms of, it's going to be up to the entity to put it back into the JED property.
And I don't think that's the way the JEDs were supposed to be set up by the O R C. There was supposed to be a percentage taken out on the money split.
I, I, I think the JEDs, and, and Brian, you brought this up, like the Austin Boulevard JED, they are basically moneymakers, you know. Almost all that money now, there's, you know, there's, there's probably not much to put into infrastructure. You know, they're, they're set up to make Miami Township, City of Dayton, money.
They have reserves, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
But they, they pick and choose, it's not a project every year, right? Now, I don't know, five years ago, I forget how far back it goes, they did spend a decent amount on some infrastructure improvements or a traffic line, something over there, right?
So just, because I, I want to be fair, I, I clearly stated this is a concern of how much, there's no doubt. But I want to be fair, that we all understand there's some new folks here tonight, that there are expenses that will be incurred by each one of the entities, or several of the entities, related to supporting the traffic, the flow, the, the, the high school and everything that will be out there with K through twelve, and that will be incremental to the positions that we're at today. And so that is part of why you would collect some of this revenues, is to be able to support that. Now, agreed, there is still a, a piece here that has been brought up tonight about how much is the right amount to set aside just to have more economic development that doesn't go to the support of the day-to-day operation of the school and whatever else may land on that property at some point in the future. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear that it's not like all this money is just coming and being collected, and there is no incremental expense to be supporting that school. Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So, right now, how much?
We please, we please state your name.
I'm sorry, Debra Cross.
Come up front so that they can hear you online.
Debra Cross, seven four four South Diver Road. So how much money now in the contract is going towards the JED property?
Well, it just depends what, how you want to frame that up, because there's going to be expenses, like Farmersville, they can speak to estimates, but I mean, they've got several things that they're going to incur to support the, the additional traffic and population that's going to be out of the school. So they're going to have additional expenses, so part of collecting this JED will be to reimburse or support and cover those expenses.
Is that for the water?
Water.
But they're going to be charging the school for the water, too, right?
Well, there's, I don't know exactly how they have it structured.
But right now, it's zero.
Zero what?
Going for, it's like JED improvement at the property itself.
Well.
So basically, Tyler, let's start with how much money is coming off the top.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is fifteen thousand, I think, initially, and then there's going to be some other fees. But I, I guess what I would say is, whether you put money into an account, there is nothing to pay for at this point. And so I think the question here that I think people are getting a little bit confused on is, do you put money in an account and hold it there for the explicit purpose of spending on economic development? Or does it flow back to the entities and allow the JED board to then reach the entities and ask for that money back? That's the question, because there is no, no project right now identified for us to spend money on. So it's a question of where do we set the money initially?
Okay, so I have one more question, since you said it that way. So all the monies that they're getting from the tax, the tax money from the people at the schools, so is that going to the entities and then being held in an account by, by the treasurer or the fiscal officer? Or does it go in the general fund? So it can be used for anything?
It could.
We would intend on putting a certain portion, whatever that is, whatever the council decides, into a economic development fund, because we would expect some project at some point. Now, it may not be for five years, but you don't want to be caught off guard.
So you hold that money, though, right? Each entity would just hold the money to be used back at the school?
It would be up to the entities to determine how they would use those funds.
They wouldn't have to.
Or a portion, whether they held them in a certain account or whatever they did.
So they wouldn't have to, but it's.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So the present way the split is, is thirty-five, thirty-five, twenty, and ten?
We can.
Then if you come up with a project and you come to Jackson Township and say, we need X number of dollars,
Ten percent back.
And we're all footing back.
Ten percent.
I'm going to put ten percent, you're going to put thirty-five percent? Is that in the contract?
Yes, sir.
So it commits us to jointly work together, supporting economic development within the JED. But that value, I think, is wholly dependent on what, you know, you guys are going to end up voting, right? I mean, maybe they want to build a water line from Germantown to the high school, and all you guys say, why the hell would we support that? We want to build a water line to the high school, they already get it from Farmersville, right?
I'm pretty sure everybody in the township and the village and the city of Germantown are going to vote on this eventually.
I hope so.
I have a feeling. We've got, we've got a Germantown Township trustee that's a teacher. Is he going up staying? You have to think about, you have to think about, you know, this little happy meetings we're having. If it goes to the whole district for a vote, what's going to happen if they turn it down? There's already been people at school board saying they don't want the JED, because it'll be a hardship on the teachers, which I don't understand, because it was a hardship on me when they passed the levy. Which had, what, one and a half percent?
But we're going to tax the teachers.
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter.
Construction upfront would be one and a half, and then.
Right, okay.
And so teachers in Farmersville today are one percent, teachers in Germantown today are one and a half. In the middle, one and a quarter, and the high school, zero today. But it all depends on where they live, too, right? I mean, there's a million scenarios that could run.
Right.
With how the taxes play out, but. But can I just then pitch your light at this point?
I guess that's one of the things, I mean, Mike, what you bring up is another very valid point, it could go to vote. I, I would be happy with that, I would be fine with that. At the end of the day, it, it's what the taxpayers want. I, I think unfortunately, Mr. Cross brings up a point that is an unhappy truth, and that's that Germantown lost a lot of revenue when the school moved out of Germantown. And so those residents in Germantown, I would assume, and I'm not going to speak for them, because that's why they could vote, but I would assume they would be in favor of JED, because it would be a way to avoid potential future income tax that they might have to face from losing that revenue within their municipality. So that's another thing I want everyone to acknowledge is, while, you know, it, it seems as though we can make this unilaterally, if, if there are votes against it, it does go to the, to the people to vote. And I, I would be completely content with that, because at the end of the day, they get to decide their, their future on that.
I would think the township residents would see, what, five hundred thousand dollars coming in over ten years? You guys have tried to pass a rev levy, what, six times over three years, from sixteen and eighteen?
But I think beyond that, I think the, the key here is that they would see that we would face additional expenses related to servicing the school, and then this could go to replace.
This kind of goes back, though, isn't it?
So they can hear.
Mark Cross. So again, the fairness of the whole thing, you are going to tax two hundred to two hundred and fifty people out of the entire ten thousand people that reside in Jackson Township, Farmersville, Germantown, Germantown Township, to fund any project that you want, basically, unless, until there's, something comes up that the school wants the money for something. So again, it's a, it's a fairness issue, too.
Yeah, I, I think.
It's, it's not like the entire, everybody is going to, you know, every, every person that votes or every entity is going to have to pay that tax. You're talking a very small amount of people.
Yeah.
And I think that Mr. Keener brought up a good point at the school board meeting, that how much it's going to cost, we're depending on where those teachers live. It's going to be kind of substantial to a lot of those teachers. To you and I, maybe a hundred dollars isn't a big deal, but to a, a person working in the cafeteria to pay an extra hundred dollars per year might be a, you know, a hardship for them, so, again.
Didn't mention that actually lowers the tax burden on a certain number of teachers.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the thing, and this is where we got to be careful, because we, we went through all these things, and we're definitely going to talk all this at a public hearing for sure and revisit this again. But the one thing, just quickly on that, is exactly what you said, I mean, a lot of these teachers are moving from Farmersville being taxed, in Germantown being taxed, and going to another place and not being taxed. Fairness of not getting that revenue for not supporting a bigger campus, is that fair to the rest of the township to, to face that burden? So I think there is a lot more to this, and I think it is a lot more complex. But I mean, I fully appreciate you bringing this up, and I do think we need to have the robust discussion with the public like this. And I, I want to have this with a broad public, you know.
Yeah, and, and another point to bring up, every time you hear people mention the, the staff or teachers at Valley View, that you tell, do you hear them say that they go above and beyond what is expected of them? And, and even the valedictorian's speech at graduation said that. So is it a terrible thing to show your appreciation by not taxing them? You know, in Germantown, you, you've got fifty-seven building sites ready to go, the one on Route Four, you know, near the subway, Strawberry Fields, Phase Four, you got fifty-seven. So you're going to be getting a lot of income from property tax income, income tax, plus if the, the place on Germantown, Dayton Farm, or Dayton Farm, Germantown, Dayton, Germantown Road, Roche Property. Dayton Pike, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, who knows when that's going to happen? That, that, yeah. So anyway, my, my point is, especially Germantown, I think if you don't get any revenue from this, I'm sure you can be okay. And I can't say that for Farmersville, I don't, I don't think they don't have the development, you know. So that, those are all, those are almost moral issues, which, you know, you, you have to address. But again, if it comes up, if you get a group of teachers that say, hey, I don't want the school board to do this, and then it's dead in the water, so you've got to make your point, you know. But, but would it be terrible to not tax your teachers, give them a break for the work they do, the hard work they do? Anyway, thank you very much.
We understand. I, I think we've got the three takeaways. I think we've had a robust conversation around things that are very important that we've all discussed many times on this one, and I have a strong feeling we're not done discussing them, so, which is, which is good, that's fine. Is there any other comments or thoughts before we move on and try to schedule an August meeting after the school board meeting? You guys want to look at your calendars, try to pull them up and see if you can get the date here set?
Hey, August?
Yeah, so I have to be up to the, well, under the nine.
Yeah, this is the board meeting and our meeting. I am not available to eighteen for this week. Are we looking at the following week, the week of the sixteenth, or we're going to do it two weeks after?
I mean, I would prefer to follow up with the school board pretty quickly, so that way we can, while it's top of mind, ask someone the questions, if there are any, and try to continue. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm open in the evenings on that week.
Does the week of the sixteenth, though?
No, 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 the week of the night.
The week of the night, okay.
It's like Thursday the twelfth.
Will the eleventh work for everybody, Wednesday?
I'm okay there. Uh, wait a second, let me check on that.
I send that, and I need the teacher night, so I am incorrect.
Will the school board have had a chance to respond if this is presented to them that night? But they've not yet seen the draft contract, and has already said that, so they've got.
I can send it to them this week.
There's a lot that they need to consider. Do you think you'll walk away with any information?
That's a fair point. I, I was more thinking meeting, and it may be just a brief one to follow up with, with Brenda or anybody else if they have questions that we need to get legal counsel to get to them before they could make a decision to enable them to, to sign in or not sign the petition or ask for any things that they have. But, I mean, it's very possible they walk away and say, we don't have any questions, and, and either they deal with it that night, or they deal with it at the next board meeting, too. So I guess we can always reserve the right to cancel it if, if there's nothing, you know, hurting it. But I think if we could try to do it that week, I can't do the, the eleventh, unfortunately. But that way, if we have, they have questions, we can get them answered quickly as possible, so they can move forward with whatever they want to do.
I can't wait till after the sixteenth.
Okay, so let's look after the sixteenth. Thursday the nineteenth?
I can't do that, but I already have other meetings that night. I've got to figure out how to juggle. I've got to figure out how to juggle. Right, what's the third?
What's the third?
I'm already juggling.
Tuesday the seventeenth?
I can call in that night.
Thursdays are bad now, so.
I had on Wednesday.
Oh, you're on Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm on Wednesday. Um, I guess we could do that Monday the sixteenth, Monday the sixteenth.
Seven o'clock meeting, since we started at six, we'll probably be done by seven.
Okay, but let's do Monday the sixteenth at six P M.
That works for me.
Any other questions before we close here? All right, I'll make a motion to close the public meeting.
I'm thinking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned at six fifty-one.